Good evening and welcome to the public hearing on the fiscal year 23 proposed budget. On behalf of the school board members, I would like to thank you for taking time this evening to come and talk to us about the budget. Mr. Frisch, Ms. Cohen, and Dr. Anderson have submitted written requests to virtually attend this evening's public hearing. All those in favor of allowing Mr. Frisch, Ms. Cohen, and Dr. Anderson to virtually attend, please raise your hands. And that is unanimous, the motion carries. Tonight, 27 speakers have registered to address the board. When your name is called, in-person speakers should approach the podium and wear a mask. Virtual speakers should unmute their microphone, turn on their camera if they wish, and begin speaking. Each speaker is allotted two minutes, and we ask that you stay within that time limit. Your remarks must address the fiscal year 23 budget. If you have not registered to speak tonight but would like an opportunity to address the board, please see the clerk to sign up for one of the five extra speaker slots. Your name will be called after the registered speakers have shared their comments. Also, there will be an opportunity for individuals to speak if there are no show speaker slots and are remaining at the end of the hearing. I will now have Ms. Madea call our first speaker.
Our first speaker is Samuel Yefru. Our next speaker is Forrest Son.
Hello. Should I just start on my own time?
Yes, please.
Okay. Today, I am here to ask for installation of dividers between urinals and within not just my high school, but the entirety of FCPS as a whole. In a crisis of germs, I believe it is best that we address one of the largest and most solvable health endemics at our school: men's bathrooms. Bathroom dividers have not just been a problem for my class of 2023. In fact, principals such as my own have advocated on a multitude of occasions to institute dividers, but they have been left in the dark because of the inconvenience of cost and violation of ADA regulation. This is illogical, knowing that this lack of usage brings upon hitting costs both with respect to student health and financially. To confirm this, I conducted two surveys: one in which FCPS students could participate and which had 300 people, and another student that was available to anyone worldwide with 1,000 participants. Using this data, I found that 78% of students have never used the urinals, not on the very edges or protected by dividers. 91% of students would rather use a stall instead of an divided urinal for any trip to the restroom, and a shocking 94% of students would use the urinals more oftenly if the dividers were instituted. These numbers were only exacerbated in my public study. As a result of men resorting to using stalls for privacy, men's bathrooms emit disgusting odors that pose a health risk and require more labor from our loving janitors. If we are able to delegate $700,000 more to turf fields, we should be able to delegate more money to more basic and vital needs. As self-proclaimed advocates of students' rights, our school board members should nevertheless be committed to things as basic as public decency. Our privacy and health, as men, should not rely on your rigidity to distribute funds to something you deem irrelevant and inconvenient. If other schools have dividers, why can't all of them have dividers? Thank you for your time, and if you have any questions relating to the statistics or plans that I made with professional plumbers that relieve the necessity of remodeling that follow ADA regulation and save money, please contact me. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sophie Gideon.
Good evening. My name is Sophie. I'm a senior at Hayfield, and I'm representing Solar on the Schools and FCPSY Student Organization. Today, I'm here to advocate for the acquisition of more electric buses. Electric school buses are important to me because they help reduce the carbon emissions of the FCPS fleet, help mitigate the health hazards of diesel particulate matter, and over time, cost less to own and operate. After hearing about the positive effects of the most recent fleet, eight electric buses, I find it essential that FCPS continues to work towards a more sustainable transportation system. Bus drivers have stated that electric buses are incredibly efficient, they operate well in cold weather, and do not require such maintenance as diesel buses. They're also cleaner and do not emit any local pollutants. As someone who has been reliant on FCPS transportation for the past 13 years, I know that bus drivers play a vital role in facilitating my education as they take students to and from school. As drivers make education accessible to students, it's how we make healthy and safe careers accessible to them by limiting their risk of developing health issues. Fueling electric buses will help protect students as well. According to the EPA, children are highly vulnerable to inhaling pollutants that bus stop and while buses are idling at schools. And as exhaust release from diesel buses spreads throughout school buildings, students are also exposed throughout the school day. Increased exposure can lead to respiratory conditions like asthma. In order to address the health conditions that are caused or aggravated by diesel particulate matter, implementing pollutant-free systems of transportation is necessary. Electric buses have the ability to limit the health risks faced by students, and bus drivers will also lead to improved air quality. Students and advocates of electric buses understand that bringing electric buses to FCPS is an upfront costly process. There are many grants available, however, most of them require the county to purchase the buses prior to reimbursement. Is there money in the budget to take advantage of these grants? FCPS should extend their funding towards these grants or begin to budget for them in order to receive the best value price. As nearby school districts such as Montgomery County and Maryland adopt creative leasing programs, we are pleased to know that you are currently investigating and learning from them. We appreciate the school system's decision to acquire additional 10 buses by spring 2022 and hope to see more advancements with electric bus purchases in the near future. Thank you all for listening and helping FCPS reach their clean transportation goals.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carolyn Hindle.
Excuse me. May I be recognized, please? Yes, Ms. Madea, is it possible to get the volume a little bit better? It's very muddled. It's difficult to hear the virtual speakers, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marin.
Our next speaker is Carolyn Hindle.
Hello, I'm Carolyn Hindle. I'm a senior at Oakton High School, and I am here to urge you to install solar at FCPS. So first, I would like to applaud the school board and the facility staff for your ongoing efforts on the solar PPA agreements. I know that it's been a long and winding road between COVID and the contract challenges. Now that negotiations with the solar installers are complete, we should begin significant solar installation as soon as possible. I urge you to start big with many schools at once. We already know that Solar on Schools is effective, as 18 school districts in Dominion service territory have already installed it. The climate crisis won't wait, and it's more cost-effective to install solar at many locations at once due to economies of scale. Now, you might ask how deploying solar is a budget issue. In the 2023 FCPS budget, there will be an overrun of $1.4 million due to price increases by Dominion Energy. This wouldn't be a problem if we had widespread solar power purchase agreements because the price is fixed for 20-plus years. No surprise, energy costs means more money towards the school board's other goals and one more step towards fulfilling the school board's commitment to carbon neutrality by 2040. When students talk about climate change, many of us frankly feel despair. We know that our world is going to become much more difficult for us to live in within our lifetimes. The school board has a chance here to give us some hope by making tangible, bold, and widespread change. At the Joint Environmental Task Force Review on January 19th, a staff member proposed an Office of Carbon Neutrality that would help create that change, which we hope to see in the budget in the near future. FCPS has the power and the resources to be a leader in environmental infrastructure. We urge you to look out for our future and make rapid solar deployment a priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rudola Rapaka.
Hello, thank you. My name is Rudola Rapaka, and I'm a senior at Shinsley High School. And I'm here to explain why I believe that designed-for-net-zero buildings, commonly called D&amp;Z buildings, are necessary for the well-being and health of students in Fairfax County. D&amp;Z buildings are well-built structures that place energy efficiency first. With solar and geothermal, D&amp;Z schools are able to generate enough energy on-site to reliably sustain themselves. D&amp;Z schools have been found to improve student performance, health, and wellness. Students in FCPS want to grow up in an environment with clean air, one that upholds their well-being and success. D&amp;Z buildings are the proven way to achieve this. Now, how do we implement D&amp;Z buildings in our county? In a study conducted by the architectural firm Perkins Eastman contracted by FCPS, it was found that it will cost an additional 5% for new schools being built and an additional 11% for renovations and additions. The study shows that D&amp;Z schools become less expensive within 10 to 15 years, depending on whether it is a new build or renovation. A lifecycle cost analysis conducted by Perkins Eastman in the same study found that in over 30 years of operating and maintaining a D&amp;Z school building, it is less expensive, functions as an educational tool, and is a high-performance learning environment. My budget question is: Has the school board done what is needed to accommodate these costs in the budget? Are these costs in the budget as of now, or do they need to be added on? The cost is absolutely worth it. Students in FCPS will be living and learning in healthier, safer, and cleaner environments that bolster their success. As a student in Fairfax County, I know that my peers and I deserve to be in more carbon-efficient school buildings. The only questions left to ask are: Where will this money come from, and how will the school board accommodate these costs in the budget? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Anshra Malik. Our next speaker is Ava Belmont.
Good evening. My name is Ava Belmont, and I am a senior at Mount Vernon High School. I've been a representative with the FCPS Student-Led Mental Health Working Group for the past two years. Last year, I wrote a proposal for the school board seeking greater telemental health support in FCPS, and I would like to share a brief excerpt. A study published in the Journal of Abnormal Psychology in 2019 showed the increase of adolescent mental health issues between 2005 and 2017. Cases of major depression among teens ages 16 and 17 rose by an overwhelming 69%. Feelings of anxiety and hopelessness increased by 71% among people ages 17 to 25. One out of five girls ages 12 to 17 had experienced major depression within the last year. Between 2008 and 2017, the suicide rate among teens ages 18 to 19 increased by 56%. There need to be telemental health support services to help mitigate the upward curve of mental health issues and suicide in school-aged children. Research consistently shows that telemental health services are beneficial in treating and preventing mental health issues and can even be more effective than in-person treatment. Seeing telemental health listed as a budget priority at the October 5th work session meant so much, and I appreciate you recognizing the importance of supporting students proactively to prevent continued deterioration of mental health and potential mental health crises. Though this is a great stride in the right direction, I plead that you budget money specifically for telemental health. Due to the limited number of school counselors, social workers, and psychologists, students who are struggling are just not getting the support that we need. The county's efforts to train students in areas like youth/teen mental health first aid and Narcan administration are great, but do not make up for the lack of access to trained professionals. That is why I am begging you in next year's budget to include telemental health support services that are accessible for all students. School board members, you can be a positive change for student mental health. The question is, will...
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kimberly Adams.
Good evening, Budget Chair Corbett Sanders, Vice Chair Tolan, members of the board, and Dr. Ivy. My name is Kimberly Adams, and I am the president of the Fairfax Education Association, a union representing thousands of your employees. The FEA advocated for a singular priority in this budget among a multitude of needs. The main priority must be compensation of your employees. We brought our proposal to the superintendent as a full-step increase, restoration of two previously missed steps, and a market scale adjustment of 4%. Our budget priority was designed to restore employees' faith in FCPS's commitment to pay its workforce. By providing compensation that is commensurate with the experience that we provide, FCPS will attract, but more importantly, retain qualified school employees. Meeting student needs is directly correlated to the value we place on our workforce. Within the salary conversation, FEA would highlight a variety of needs that should also be incorporated. Evaluate all employee scales, beginning with support employees, including transportation, custodial, food service, and instructional technology staff or ESbits. Examine the living wage issue again and incorporate a minimum of $20 an hour into all scales. Provide advanced education support through improved tuition reimbursement. Provide alternative paths to teaching with full student teaching experiences included within FCPS. Your top priority must be to provide salary steps for all employees that are compensated on a scale with steps, provide restoration of missed steps, and a cost of living for all. This budget brought by the superintendent begins to address our concerns, but there is much work to be done. We ask that you dialogue a bit more deeply directly with your employees. We look forward to a conversation lasting longer than my two-minute speech. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is David Walrod. Our next speaker is Tina Williams.
Good evening. I'm Tina Williams, president of the Fairfax County Federation of Teachers Union, which represents thousands of employees with FCPS. We want to thank you for your commitment to keeping schools open and safe for everyone. I also want to express appreciation for Dr. Braybrand, the leadership team, and the school board for a budget that includes a well-meeted infusion of funding for its staff with a step increase for those eligible, 4% MSA for everyone, improving pay for subs and drivers, funding that invests in student learning and success. Successfully addressing interruptions in student learning as a result of the pandemic is our task, and we are advocating alongside our school district to the Board of Supervisors and General Assembly to receive full investment in our students' education and future. We ask this board to consider continued funding for social, emotional, and mental health support to address anxiety, stress, and trauma that our students are experiencing. This means more new positions for school counselors and social workers, psychologists, and school nursing positions to meet the recommended minimum staffing ratios. More direct support positions and services for our most vulnerable student populations: English-language learners, economically disadvantaged students, and students with disabilities have been disproportionately impacted and require more services to address delays in their learning progress. We also urge our school district to expand the community schools model for direct services and support to students and families. Provide additional compensation for FCPS employees at the top of pay scales. These longtime employees are often our lead teachers and staff mentors yet are not eligible for step increases. Tonight, you will hear from our members on the impact of years of missteps and suggestions on how to work together. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Anne Marie Swope.
Good evening. My co-chair Anne Marie Swope couldn't make it as she's stuck in traffic. My name is Nancy Trainer, and I am co-chair along with Anne Marie of the Education Committee of the Fairfax County Federation of Citizens Associations. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of the Federation's Education Committee. We would like to begin our remarks by commending FCPS for communicating strong support for our teachers and other staff by proposing a 4% market scale adjustment plus step increase. The Federation has for many years supported FCPS in attaining and then maintaining a competitive market position for its educational workforce. We are concerned that morale within the teaching profession has declined, and we support measures that support our staff. We are also aware, however, that because of the politically intractable LCI formula that Virginia uses to fund education, the burden of funding our schools will continue to fall largely on the shoulders of the county's homeowners. You propose a 5.2% increase in the county transfer at a time when FCPS's enrollment has fallen by 5.4% from its pre-pandemic levels, a steeper decline than seen in surrounding jurisdictions. With that as background, we urge you to focus spending only on those items which mean the most to our staff, and avoid spending on any item that further burdens their time or adds responsibilities beyond their expertise in education. FCPS has recently accepted multiple new or expanded responsibilities, from contract tracing to meal delivery to children's mental health needs. We urge the county to step forward as fuller partners with FCPS on these and other issues. We're also concerned with the expansion of professional development and/or mandatory training that isn't focused on proven pedagogical improvements or innovations. Time spent in unnecessary or ineffective training is a major staff complaint and potentially takes away from individual, team, and school planning time. Thank you for your time this evening and for all the time that you spend on various school matters.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Schuman Rayman. Our next speaker is Sue Ann Tupi. Our next speaker is Amy Lacrosse.
Good evening. I am an elementary lead special education teacher and the educator liaison chair on the SEPTA board. Tonight, I am addressing the board as an individual. I would like to urge the board to approve the elementary special education lead teacher position as it is written in the proposed budget. Currently, there are special education lead teachers or department chairs in middle school and high school whose responsibilities include gaining and disseminating information from lead teacher meetings, planning and conducting collaborative team meetings, as well as completing all of the many responsibilities and duties of a local screening chair. In middle school and high school, these teachers dedicate their time to these positions without a caseload. In the elementary school, these positions also exist, however, they come with the added responsibilities of a full caseload of students. One teacher shared with me that in addition to being local screening chair, she has 17 students across three grade levels on her caseload. This is not uncommon in the elementary schools, where staffing has been a challenge with the use of the current formula. I am confused as to why in the middle school and high school, this position is full-time, however, in the elementary school, it is not. Allow me to be clear: Elementary school teachers in these positions are working two full-time jobs with the pay of one. Where is the equity? If it is the intention of the board to be able to fully staff schools and provide students with disabilities with a free and appropriate public education, as is the law, it is vital that you approve this position in the budget. Teachers are burned out, they feel unsupported, their work-life balance is blurred because of the astronomical responsibilities required of their positions, not to mention not having planning time and sometimes no lunch. On behalf of the elementary special education teachers, their general education partners, students, families, and the rest of the school staff who are being stretched thin, I implore the board to approve this budget item. Doing so would also open up staffing so that students will truly be met by name and by need.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Robert Jordan.
Good evening. This evening, I'm speaking on behalf of the Faith Alliance for Climate Solutions, or FACS, which is a nonpartisan, nonprofit organization that began in Fairfax County. Today, our thousands of supporters are drawn from 180 faith communities throughout northern Virginia. Climate change is an existential threat to students in our schools. We congratulate the FCPS board for adopting the recommendations of the Joint Environmental Task Force, or JET, but there is no way to measure progress toward achieving the JET's environmental goals in the draft budget. The budget should delineate the resources required to move forward to achieve these goals. Currently, there are insufficient staff and financial resources available to meet the commitments as a result of the JET process. The budget should fund additional staff needed to quickly expand the Solar on Schools program. The Office of Transportation Services request for an additional position to oversee the transition to electric buses should also be funded. In addition, several firms with experience in fleet conversion to electric buses responded to the request for information issued by the FCPS. The budget should provide funding for such a firm to be hired. FCPS staff has proposed creation of an Office of Carbon Neutral Implementation Performance and Accountability that would undertake a new program of renovations of high schools to meet the JET's net-zero targets. FACS supports this idea but recommends that the new office also oversee Solar on Schools and the electric school bus conversion. Funding should be provided for this office in the FY 2023 budget. FACS also urges that funding be provided for a full-time zero-waste coordinator position under the Get to Green program. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Fern Ward. Our next speaker is Charles Watkins. Our next speaker is Libia Domon.
Hi there. Good evening, Chair Pocarski, Dr. Braybrand, and members of the board. I offer each of you an early happy Valentine's Day because one of my young neighbors left this bag full of Now and Later candies outside my door today, and it struck me that Now and Later is a perfect analogy for this budget hearing tonight. I'll explain in a moment. My name is Libia Domon. I'm a proud FCPS visual art teacher. This is my 19th year here, and I'm also a member, a proud member of my union, FCFT. Last week, I was grateful when Dr. Braybrand proposed a budget offering educators a step increase and a 4% MSA. We are moving in the right direction. Still, we need to make up for the six years of step increase freezes, the five years of no MSA that I have experienced during my career in FCPS. I'm concerned how the loss of potential income now impacts my retirement later. As I understand it, the retirement pay is based on my last three years in FCPS, which is striking because not only have we lost those six years of steps, but sadly, the steps significantly stall after being 20 to 23 years of service in the county. I ask for your help in doing the following: Number one, approve Scott Braybrand's proposal of step increase and 4% MSA. Number two, offer us an additional 1% because this move would ensure educators get the 5% raise proposed last year by the state of Virginia. And number three, add 1% seniority increase for those at the top of the scale who won't benefit from the step as they get closer to retirement. While this budget impacts us now, the educators of FCPS need you to be mindful of the impact later. Have a sweet night.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nadine Wright. Our next speaker is Casey Hoffman-Laylock.
Good evening, board and leadership. On behalf of the Associated School Librarians of Fairfax County, I would like to ask that the librarian positions at Burke School, Quander Road High School, and Cedar Lane High School be funded as full-time, regular contract positions. Making these positions full-time would add 1.5 teacher positions to the budget. These schools exist to provide students, students who have unique needs as determined by their IEPs, with an exceptionally broad range of resources while also providing specialized support to challenge their educational and personal development needs. But unlike a student at any other school in FCPS, they are not guaranteed that they can go to their school library and it be open. Essentially, this is an equity issue. These students have less access to literacy instruction and resources. Prior to working at my current school, I was the librarian at Cedar Lane High School part-time. When I worked at Cedar Lane, I knew that I could not fulfill the needs of that school community just being part-time. When I co-taught, I could only teach certain periods and certain classes. Students with irregular schedules or academy classes, I would rarely see. I couldn't meet and plan with staff if their planning were outside my schedule. It is frustrating to everyone to have a part-time library program. For the librarians who work at these schools, whose hearts are with these students, it is difficult to know that even if an administrator has made trades to give you more hours, you are not considered a regular, full-time employee in FCPS. Like I did, these educators annually must decide if they can stay at the schools they love so much. Please consider the small addition to the budget that would make a dramatic impact by providing more opportunity and consistency for these students at these three schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Amy Sheldon.
Hi, my name is Amy Sheldon, and I'm an FCPS social worker assigned to the Early Childhood Assessment My name is Amy Sheldon, and I'm an FCPS social worker assigned to the Early Childhood Assessment Team. We're to place families with preschool-aged children go to begin the special education eligibility process, and our core assessment teams are comprised of social workers, psychologists, speech and language pathologists, and audiologists. We're often the very first experiences families have with the school system, yet families are often met with lengthy assessment periods due to a surge of referrals and limited staff. In fact, the number of assessment team members have remained the same for the past 10 years, despite the number of assessments increasing as much as 43% within this time period. This has a direct impact on our social workers' ability to fully provide social, emotional, and resource supports to the families we serve. We've seen a steady increase in special education referrals made due to concerns with social, emotional development. Many of these families require more intensive interventions, for which we've been able to receive a very short-term grant to provide additional social work support. 109 families were referred for these intervention services last year, and now we've already reached 80% of last year's total with half a school year to go. We know that 90% of a child's brain development happens within the first five years of life, and that early intervention directly impacts a child's academic success and school readiness. On behalf of my Childfind team, I'm asking the board to consider funding additional positions specific to our program. We're in need of multiple social work, psychology, and speech and language positions at each assessment site, as well as additional funding to be able to continue the increased need for preschool mental health and family support interventions. I'd also like to ask the board to consider the provision of several 12-month contracts as our program mandates services throughout the entire calendar year, yet there are no 12-month assessment positions available. I thank you for your time and consideration and look forward to continuing this conversation with you soon.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Angela Boyer.
Yes. Good afternoon, good evening, and thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with the board tonight. I'm very happy to be here, and I'm happy to be here because I think we have an opportunity now to redirect our budget and do something much more useful with it than we have in the past. It's a new year, we have much to do. We need to look forward to our future. We have a chance to make up for all our lost time, the lost learning, the lost time spent in class together, building camaraderie between the students. The schools are open now, and they should remain that way, but we need to get the funding reallocated into the correct places. With the spread of Omicron, effectively giving us nature's vaccine and herd immunity, the pandemic is effectively over. We need to move back to normal, and we need to redirect all those funds to more useful slots. Money spent should be able to create an opportunity for a truly supportive and educational system that's based on excellence again and unity for all the students, where we embrace them with dignity and mutual respect. Many of our children will require special additional attention and education, and these items have been addressed by some of the people who have spoken before me. But what are the costs associated with some of the other issues? Social distancing, masking, regulations, how do we change them? And where is the budget item for the redistribution of COVID funding? I know a lot of it is tied to ESA and ESSL funding. Is there some agreement that all the costs incurred for COVID are completely reimbursed by the federal government back to the schools? Are we in a sense loading the cash in each individual school with a lot of funding that could have been used for other services? Where will the money be spent? And now that we have stricken CRT from our educational literature and teachings, I can offer you a substitute for CRT. Let's take the C and make it for CIP.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Arthur Purvis.
Can I take this off?
Require mask inside. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, I am Arthur Purvis, President of the Fairfax County Taxpayers Alliance. In the press release announcing the superintendent's proposed budget, it begins with this statement, quote, "Drawing on a history of academic success that has seen Fairfax County students from all backgrounds succeed at the highest levels," end quote. There is no evidence for this statement. In fact, your 2021 SAT press release tells the opposite. The average SAT score for whites was 1220, but only 1095 for Latinos. Even in his budget message, the superintendent states that, quote, "The pandemic has also amplified student achievement gaps within our school division," end quote. The 200-page 2023 budget document, which asks for $112 million more dollars to teach 11,000 fewer students, has only one table addressing student achievement, a list of SAT scores for neighboring districts, and FCPS's fourth. By contrast, the 2010 proposed budget had seven pages addressing student achievement, including the same comparison of SAT scores, but in 2010, FCPS was second. Also, since the pre-pandemic year of 2019, per-student spending has increased from $15,000 to $19,000, all for lower achievement and bigger achievement gaps. We do applaud the school board's equitable access to literacy plan, which replaces balanced literacy with phonological awareness, and recognizes that the high school achievement gaps begin with the third-grade reading gap. The Taxpayer Alliance has supported this for 20 years. However, this plan will be implemented over, quote, "the next few years." Also, there is the same problem with low math achievement for third grade due to opposition to math drill, but that is not being addressed.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Emily Vanderhoff.
Hello. Good evening, Chair Pekarsky, Dr. Braybrand, and members of the board. My name is Emily Vanderhoff. I'm a first-grade teacher and a proud member of my union, FCFT. I'm going to start by thanking Dr. Braybrand for presenting a budget that prioritizes compensation. I also want to share my appreciation for each member of this board, who have continuously demonstrated a commitment to finding ways to properly compensate staff even during tight budget years. I appreciate the advocacy work you do at the local and state level to get FCPS the funding we need. As you know, the years of pay freezes and lost steps have severely eroded staff morale. Staff who have been with FCPS since 2009 have gone through six step freezes and five years of a 0% MSA. The average annual salary increase from 2010 to 2021, sorry, was... The average salary increase from 2010 to 2021 has been 2.1%. Comparatively, between 2003 to 2009, the average increase was 5.1%, with the step and either a 2 or 3% MSA every single year. It will take multiple years of bold investments in staff compensation to begin to make up for the years of freezes, which have a compounding impact on affected staff's lifetime earnings. I urge you to approve Dr. Braybrand's proposal of a step and a 4% MSA. I also urge you to seek ways to make up for the years of lost freezes. One small step that you could take would be to add a 1% seniority increase for those at the top of the scale who won't benefit from the step. The proposed state budget calls for a 5% raise for educators, and so the extra 1% would ensure that all the staff would get at least 5%. Our top-of-scale pay is also the lowest out of all WABE districts, and so this bump would help to bring our end-of-career pay up to par with our neighboring districts. And finally, with only 23 steps in the teacher pay scale, and even fewer steps in other scales like the unified scale, our most experienced employees spend 10 years or more at the top of the scale before they're eligible to retire. An added seniority pay increase would demonstrate that FCPS values the experience of these employees.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kenneth White.
Good evening, Ms. Corvus Sanders and fellow school board members. My name is Kenny White, one of the co-chairs of the Minority Student Achievement Oversight Committee, and I'm on the committee, serving under the appointment of my school board member, Chairman Darinak Kofax. In a letter we sent to the board in the fall, we said that the chief equity officer position did not have sufficient resources to fulfill the office's mission and the additional work assigned by the school board. First, let me say that we acknowledge and applaud adding an equity director, project manager, and data specialist to support this office. However, we are disappointed that only 29% of the FY 23 increase is earmarked to opportunity and access. In a letter to Ms. Pekarsky in October, MSAOC critically reviewed information in the Division Wide Comprehensive Plan and found that even before the COVID-19 pandemic disrupted in-person instruction, reading a math SOL test score showed it to be among the lowest-performing students, but not among their Asian and white classmates, resulting in the achievement gap becoming wider. We are discouraged that our most vulnerable students are struggling to learn and are falling further behind. Lastly, teacher levels for the Title I schools have dropped from 117 in FY19 to 107 in FY22 because the federal funding level has stayed at $25 million and not taken into consideration market salary adjustments. Economically, disadvantaged students are 31.5% of current enrollment when they were 29% in FY19, even after FCPS has lost a little over 11,000 students this year. We recommend 10 additional teachers to the Title I schools to the FY23 proposed budget. Thank you for your consideration of our recommendations and the opportunity to extend and revise our remarks.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dave Swan.
Good evening. Fortune Magazine described good managers as doing things right; good leaders as doing the right things. This budget is done right. FCPS can't fill their substitute teacher positions, is 20% short bus drivers, has fewer food service workers producing 25% more food while we meet less than half our preventative maintenance needs. Our existing office staff is doing all their regular work while overseeing unprecedented COVID protocols and federal funding with no stipends. We've frozen steps the last two years and hope to add just one this year. We have fewer students than in 2012, yet this budget proposes adding 470 positions. I think it was Peter Drucker who said the one true axiom of managers is that they always justify the need for assistant managers. Some feel we're living in a Dilbert cartoon. The custodians, who 60% of the time have to cover the workload of their absent coworkers, sure aren't saying, "Well, it's about time we added 52 more assistant principals to schools with fewer students in them." Our IAs, who by statute are considered one-half a teacher, sure aren't saying, "Finally, we've added 83 more positions to the staffing reserve that never cover our role." We haven't started collective bargaining, yet management is already asking for more staff to their million-dollar group. We give stipends of over $10,000 for teachers who must cover additional students in the classrooms, yet when bus drivers ask for the same incentive the local county is paying for handling doublebacks, they were told, "No, there's no money." A caring culture must prioritize respect to the needs of our existing frontline workers before adding any new programs, staff, or expense if we hope to attract and retain the finest. On behalf of the SSEAC, representing 40% of your workforce, I thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Brian DeQuitner.
Good evening. I'm Brian DeQuitner, president and co-founder of the Fairfax Support Professionals Association. I come tonight with a concern that our message is not being heard. We've been advising management that we're losing qualified people to our surrounding jurisdictions for pay differences for some time. Your own studies show that we are actively losing existing drivers. Right now, almost 25% of our already depleted bus driver ranks can retire, go to a neighboring jurisdiction, make more money, and of course, get the sign-on bonus. In November, we were told that the 2.5% transportation increase was just a stopgap measure until a full pay scale analysis could be done by December. Now it's January, and leadership is prepared to tell hundreds of loyal bus drivers that they're getting paid plenty. There's no appreciable difference with the surrounding school systems. I'm here to tell you, they're not buying it because they know better. We know that the money comes from the board of supervisors. What does not come from them is the way the money is spent. Not paying step increases and substantial MSAs time after time lies solely with you and your predecessors. No step increase with increasing costs equals a pay cut to your employees. This budget proposal acknowledges that we have approximately 6.5% fewer students this year than pre-COVID, yet we are adding hundreds of staff positions before addressing previous cuts. Teachers are provided stipends for increased student workload, yet bus drivers are told we can't afford the same for them. This new calendar proposal that just came out, and though we've pointed out in the past that cost added of unpaid workdays is borne by less-than-11-month employees, we added two beyond the three professional development days paid for everyone, which we appreciate. We don't really care what these days are for and who they observe. We just don't want our people to have to pay for them. If it's important enough to add to the school...
Thank you. Our next speaker is Missy Pratt.
Hi. My name is Missy Pratt. I've put four children through FCPS schools, our last child being a senior this year. I am addressing the board today as a Fairfax County taxpayer and a citizen with a vested interest as to where my hard-earned dollars are being applied and used. So I would like you all to remove immediately any funding that has been directed towards mask mandates. The bottom line is this: Masks do not prevent the spread, and masks hurt children. You are ignoring the actual science that says that virus, that the virus SARS-CoV-2 is too small and escapes every mask unless you are wearing a K95 mask. But even if everyone wore a K95 mask, there are critical costs being paid by masking children. You are ignoring the irreparable damage that masks are causing physically, emotionally, and psychologically. And Governor Glenn Youngkin issued an executive order revoking the mask mandates to be executed today, January 24th. But what was the response of FCPS Superintendent Dr. Braybrand to not only ignore the explicit orders of Virginia's governor, but to email parents and students announcing his defiance and insisting that FCPS families essentially ignore a governor's explicit order? The most important fact that this executive order establishes is the fact that parents know what is best for their children, and that parents, aka taxpayers, aka the ones that pay each of your salaries, including Dr. Braybrand, ends the tyrannical, damaging mask mandates. You now have the opportunity to redirect these funds to pay teacher salaries. So the bottom line is this: We are saying, as Fairfax County taxpayers, no more masks.
Thank you. Now I will go back and call the names of those who were not in attendance. Samuel Yefru. Anshra Malik. David Walrod. Sue Ann Tupi. Shuman Raman. Fern Ward. Charles Watkins.
Ladies and gentlemen that have come before us tonight, thank you for your time and thoughtful comments. We appreciate them. Those that have not submitted them in writing, please go ahead and send them to the clerk so that they can be shared with the board. We will be having a work session on the budget on February 8th. And with that, I thank you for your time, and this meeting is adjourned.